Okay, at 7:00 I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag.
We pledge the flag in the United States of America and here in the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our last meeting of the year. Maybe. I'll swing pen. I think you did take my pen. Thank you. Minutes of the summer third meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report. We received the financial report. Anya, do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
Some move.
I have a question real quick.
Have a motion. Let me grab a second real quick, DJ.
Alright.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion in.
Steve, uh, let's see, 04510 Vaughn Fitch on stripping vehicles.
That's a graphic for these vehicles.
Oh, gotcha.
Actually, it should be striping.
Gotcha.
Not stripping, that's stripping.
Thank you. We've got a valve there. And, um, the street sweeper. Didn't we have our own street sweeper?
No. I don't know if you ever did, but we've had the same contractors.
I just thought it was ours.
Our contract.
No, we never had one.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Very good. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Real quickly, while we're talking about the finances, Michelle, we had a couple vehicles that went to Morris or the Ritchie Brothers?
Yes.
How'd they do yesterday?
Total $5,000 some dollars.
Fantastic, great.
Didn't do, didn't do, uh, too well in 2007, unfortunately, because we could've got five grand from the insurance, but we only got $1,250 for it on the auction.
What vehicle was that?
2007 police car that was wrecked. It was totaled, so we couldn't use it until I told the auction. But we didn't get as much money as I anticipated. But in general, uh, $5,000 is what it was.
Very good. Okay, we have a presentation. We have a certificate of recognition for Officer Ed Donnelly. Come on up. Come on up. We've got something for you. And I'd like to invite the board to come down with me if you would. You're doing great, huh?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, I'm gonna do a little photo op as I read this, and we've got, uh, we've got, Louis is grabbing another camera for us to do it. Of course, we're gonna be live on the videotape for many years. The counselor's smile very big there. But I'd like to make this presentation from the mayor and the commissioners of the town of Elton. Officer First Class Edward Donnelly, he has known the mayor, commissioners, and the citizens of the Elton community hereby recognize and commend the outstanding performance of Officer First Class Edward Donnelly for saving the life of a citizen who was suffering cardiac arrest till November 13th, 2014, as herein described. Officer Donnelly responded to a call of an individual who was in cardiac arrest, provided first responder emergency care, including the use of an automated external defibrillator until the arrival of the EMS personnel. Officer Donnelly is committed for his quick and decisive action to save the life of another and hereby applauded for his excellent performance in this situation is presented the certificate of special recognition from the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton.
Thank you.
Move on, make it back.
Very cool.
Here we got one from Stat 2. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks. Good night.
That would be great, Lou. If you can get one with the chief and, uh, there we go. Take a few seconds.
Good job. Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Same to you. Thank you very much.
We're gonna get one with, uh, Louis gonna get one with your chief and look at the family there. One more out there. Sorry.
How did my truck not get it? Excellent. Put you on the cover of Life magazine.
We gotta wait for Michelle. Here she comes. There she comes. Very good. Thank you. Okay, it's 7:05 and we have a public hearing. The public hearing tonight is on ordinance 5-2014, amending the Elton zoning ordinance, Article X, permissible uses, Section 7.2, Table permissible uses, and subdivision plan, Section 4, final, oh, no, not Section 4. Uh, I'm not gonna continue to read. I'll let you, I'll let you do it, Jean. I'm getting confused up here. It's all yours.
Okay, what we have is, um, we have two minor changes to the zoning ordinance. Staff had noted that there was, uh, some minor changes necessary to accommodate certain existing uses and certain protocols that we currently, uh, had, had used in the past for previous ordinance and that were not included in the current ordinance. The first one entails, um, allowing for motor vehicle repair and maintenance, not including bodywork, in the town center zone by special exception with conditions. The planning commission unanimously recommended adoption of ordinance 5-214, 2014, contingent upon, um, adding some additional language regarding starting and ending times for that such use. The ordinarily, um, such uses as motor vehicle repair and maintenance you would see out on like Route 40, not so much in the downtown area. However, we do have more than one auto repair business in the downtown areas. There's no language to allow for that to be, um, an approved, um, use in the downtown. So, we've allowed that in here with special exception in the town center zone. Um, we've reduced the amount, the minimum lot size from 20,000 square feet to 10,000 in the TC district, town center district. And, um, we've reduced the amount of landscaping that would be necessary because the lots are generally smaller in the town center zone. Um, so we made that a little more accommodating to the size of the lot you would expect in the downtown area. And we added, um, time constraints which are consistent with our town code, um, so that, um, no maintenance or repair work on motorized vehicles or equipment shall be performed after the hour of 9:00 PM or before 7:00 AM, Monday through Friday, or 8:00 AM Saturday and Sunday, in any residential area. And that's to help avoid conflicts between, um, working on vehicles and, and people trying to sleep.
Okay.
So that's the first amendment.
Do you want us to go ahead and move for, uh, it's a public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on ordinance 5-2014? Board members, anyone have any comments?
I have one question. When it, um, line two, when it talks about, uh, vehicle storage shall be temporary inside or rear yards, uh, what is, what is temporary?
Uh, it cannot be used as a junkyard, for lack of a better term.
Temporary, meaning 10 days, 30 days?
Temporary, meaning until the car can be worked on and, and then given back to the owner. So it's temporary. Cannot be a permanent use to store, uh, vehicles on the site.
When I was looking at that, I was thinking that if it was a, like a mechanic's lien, somebody's not gonna pay, they store it outside, and they store it there, they store it there, they store it there, they store it there, and then anybody go to court. So that would be temporary storage in my eyes. I was just worried that a temporary storage wouldn't exceed a certain amount of days, especially downtown.
So, so what his word is, if it's 30 days, you've been questioned about this, do they get another 30 days, 60 days? What is temporary?
Yeah, I didn't see any, any day amount meaning temporary.
So, you would like a definition of temporary?
Yeah, just so there's, there's no problems.
So if someone questions?
And I should've called you, sorry. I should've called you about that earlier. And I saw you today, I should've asked you about it, and I just forgot about it. Sorry.
So if someone questions, uh, that, from that questioning as far as legal stands for it, um, 30 days prior to that, there's not another 30 days after that because, oh, I'm getting it worked on now. You see what I'm saying? So that's what I think, uh...
Yeah. If it's 60 days, 45 days, I'm just concerned that somebody's perception is different than our perception. That's all.
In other words, arbitrary next time.
We're just not in the backyard, not in the side, not out there looking hideous.
Right.
Especially downtown.
Correct. We could leave that up for interpretation as the issue may come in for discussion with any new, uh, use, or we could set a timeline if you'd like to.
Wow. It's your forte. It really is. I would follow your legal.
We could probably leave it flexible, and then if it becomes a problem, then we could probably, we may wanna set some standards.
If we set a standard after it's already been discussed with, with a, an establishment, they're not grandfathered in in any way. They would have to start following the rules of that particular time, correct?
Since it's not defined, and I would defer to our attorney, but since it's not defined currently, once we define it, I think they would be subject to definition.
Okay. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Lou, do you need us to make a motion to accept this for introduction?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to accept this ordinance for introduction?
Some move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next ordinance, seven, Dan. What happened to six, dash two?
Six, the planning commission had, uh, some additional comments regarding the proposed sign ordinance for monument signs for subdivisions. Uh, they wanted additional language regarding, um, the message board type signage. They did not wanna see message board type signage as part of a monument signage for a subdivision.
Okay.
So we're, we're working on the language for that that will be acceptable to them.
So you're, let's, uh, let's hear ordinance 7-2014.
And, um, this ordinance just addresses something that was inadvertently omitted from the update on the zoning ordinance, and it requires notification of adjacent property owners, uh, for, uh, preliminary and final subdivision approval. Um, it's, it's mentioned under conceptual approval, and there was supposed to be a referral under, in the order, in the subdivision language, under preliminary and final to refer back to this notification requirement, so that the adjacent property owners are notified, um, as to the action the planning commission, any action coming on the property before the planning commission. Was actually pointed out by developer.
It's a public hearing. Does anyone in the floor have any questions or comments in regards to ordinance 7-2014? Anyone on the board have any questions or comments, did Jean? Do we have a motion to accept for introduction ordinance 7-2014?
Some move.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Jean.
Thank you.
Okay, Eddie.
Yes.
I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Ken Benner up from Severn Trent. We had a meeting with Ken last week at the, uh, workshop and, uh, very educational. Thank you for that presentation. I think it's, uh, uh, we're, we're all digesting all that information and think there could be some opportunities there down the road.
That's awesome.
Very good. So you're on to give your report.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I, um, wanted to give you a update on the, on the town's water and wastewater treatment facilities for the month of October and November. Uh, first, I'd just like to, uh, comment on the results, uh, for the month of October. Uh, the BOD going out of the treatment plant averaged 1.7 milligram per liter. Uh, the total nitrogen averaged 1.8, which is outstanding. And the phosphorus was 0.4 milligram per liter. And, uh, we had the calculations on the pounds, uh, that we discharged for the year. Uh, I know December, we have to go through November, December, but just, you know, uh, for the total nitrogen we discharged so far was like 13,000 pounds, and the town were allowed 37,000.
Wow.
So that's less than 50% of the permit allowed. And the, and the phosphorus discharge is even, even unbelievable. It's, we discharged 322 pounds of phosphorus for the year so far, and were allowed 27, almost 2,800. 322 to 2,800.
Now, what do you think the significant savings, uh, or the calculations are? Do you think it's in the treatment process, the quality of the plant, or less issues with the cleaning of the water, or?
No, it's not that. It's the, um, the capacity of the plant. Uh, you know, it's, it, it does, it, uh, it does an excellent job removing the, the total nitrogen and the phosphorus. And it had, it's gonna have a, uh, a, a great impact on, uh, on, on Big Elk Creek and, and the bay. I mean, uh, yeah, because that can cause a lot of problems, discharging a lot of nitrogen out in the bay, you know, a lot of phosphorus. It causes a lot of algae blooms, and, and then you get fish kills and that type of thing. So it's, we're doing, uh, Elton's really doing their job and, uh, you know, contributing to the improvement of the bay for sure.
Thank you.
Uh, the, um, uh, we've, we've got a lot of things done, uh, this past, uh, month. I just wanted to talk about a couple of them, um, a couple of operational changes that we made. Uh, one of the things we did was, uh, we, we lowered the operating level in Walnut Tattler. Uh, and the reason we did that was, um, a couple reasons. We wanted to, um, we wanted to reduce our chlorine concentration, but still maintain chlorine out in the community. And, uh, and by also doing that, we were able to reduce our, our trihalamethanes and our halicytic acids, which are, uh, disinfection byproducts. And, uh, we're in stage two right now with the disinfection by, byproduct role. And, uh, we monitor now, uh, four, uh, locations throughout the town, and, uh, so far, we're doing really well with that. Uh, but, um, I'm real pleased, but what we were seeing in, at the Walnut Hill, uh, community was that, uh, we were having, we were struggling, uh, maintaining chlorine residual, so we, uh, 'cause we wanted to be, because what happens if you feed too much chlorine, the disinfection byproducts go up. And one of the ways we can, can control them is to feed less chlorine. So we wanna maintain adequate chlorine residual and maintain, uh, less of the disinfection byproducts. So, uh, another thing that causes high concentrations is the longer the water sits in the system, the higher those disinfectant, disinfection byproducts become. So it's, it's kinda like a juggling act. Now, there are some other things we could do. I might, we might wanna talk about a little bit, but I hope that was essentially why we did that. And it's working, it's working well. So, so far, so good. We, uh, also collected all the monthly back tees, and we also collected the trihalamethanes and halicytic acids, uh, in early November, and they came back in compliance. So we're doing really well with that. We, uh, also, we did a, uh, a profile on the filters at the treatment plant, the water treatment plant. And, uh, we wanted to, basically, we wanted to see, uh, the condition of the filters. And what we found was that, uh, the media in the filters were, were down about 15 inches in the filters. So, we, we need to replace a medium. And, uh, so we put that in the CIP that we're working on, and we'll have it ready for you this week. I'll give it to Louis and I'll give everyone a copy, and I'll let you look at it. But that's, that's one of the items on the capital improvement plan, is, uh, to replace, uh, the media that's going out of the filters.
Now, what is that medium? Is it like a salt or a sand, or?
Well, we have, Mayor, we have, uh, what they call cap filters. Uh, they're, uh, basically, they have, uh, two different sized sands, and then they have anthracite on top, okay? And, uh, basically anthracite's gone.
Okay.
Okay. And what happens is, you know, we're talking, I guess over 20 years of, of use, so what happens is it actually wears away. And, and also, when you backwash the filters, you, you lose some in the backwash. So over time, you lose this medium. Now, one of the things that we wanted to discuss, I wanted to discuss it with, uh, Louis and, um, and get his feeling on it, but, uh, you know, since the plant is, is, is showing its age a little bit, and, uh, uh, we were thinking maybe instead of just replacing that amount of, of, of media, maybe we might, we even want to go down and replace the underdrain system and the filters as well. Um, and if we did that, that would be a really good thing, because, uh, one of the things we did, um, some years, not too many years ago, when, uh, we took over the Chapel Hill Water Treatment Plant, they had sand filters, and, um, they had to be all rebuilt. So what we did was we took the sand out, and when we got to the underdrain system, it was in terrible condition. So we replaced the underdrain system with a new, uh, modern system, stainless steel, uh, underdrain tiles. And what that gave us was when we replaced the underdrain system with these tiles, which were only six inches, uh, in depth, we were able to eliminate all the different layers of gravel that's underneath the sand. So what we were able to do then was we were able to make the bed deeper, and so, which made the efficiency of the filters even better. And what we did was instead of placing, replacing the sand, we replaced it with granular activated carbon. So we were not only able to get good filtration, but we are, uh, but, but the carbon also reabsorbed, uh, anything that, uh, organic material that was dissolved in the water. And talking about those trihalamethanes, one of the things that causes trihalamethanes is dissolved organic material, like from decaying leaves and, and, and branches and things like that out in the stream. All surface water has tannic acids and folic acids, and these are what react with chlorine that causes the disinfection byproduct. So one, one goal is to remove the organics, uh, before you even chlorinate it. So, you know, like, uh, so there's different things you can use to control these trihalamethanes. Well, trihalamethanes are carcinogens, and that's why EPA and MDE had set the limit on the trihalamethanes at 80 part per billion and the halicytic acids at 60 part per billion. Okay? So there are things that, you know, your water, uh, you can do to eliminate them, well, or practically eliminate them. And this is, this is something that you might wanna consider doing as well, uh, converting those filters and upgrading them to a, uh, granular carbon would be a, a really good thing.
Can you show that to us in your budget for next year, or, or a proposal to us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. One of, uh, one of the things we did was, uh, we recently installed these chlorine analyzers at well one and well three, so that if, for instance, if something were to happen to the chlorine feed pump, they would shut the well down and, and, and alarm, because one would let us know. Uh, that's pretty much what I wanted to tell you about, but I, I also, one other thing about the, the, uh, the capital improvement plan is, is I mentioned to you, uh, about the leak detection, and I told you I was gonna give you some information. So let me give this to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those are great babies.
So this, this company here, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Is the company that the town uses for their water meters, this LB Water. So, uh, you know, we're, we are very familiar with doing business with them. So they also sell this leak detection equipment. So I met with them, uh, and they, they're willing to come at and, and give a, a, a talk to the mayor and council if, if you should so desire. And,
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me know when I can call them and set it up and, uh...
Uh, I would love to have this group on the workshop.
Okay, and maybe at the first year?
Yeah, that'd be great. We could, yep, if we can make it happen.
Okay, great.
Love, love to talk to them. This is right up what we're, uh, what we need to get working on.
Excellent, excellent. And, uh, I have one more thing I wanna tell you. Uh, my daughter's gonna have another baby.
Oh, congratulations.
It's number three.
Oh, my gosh.
So...
Congrats.
Just found out, so what a great Christmas present, huh?
Every meeting before Christmas, you have a grandbaby.
It's either Father's Day or Christmas, you know?
Well, thank you, Ken.
Ken, I have a couple of questions real quick. Um, I'm assuming that once the race gets dirty, you turn off or turn down the purification system, instead of just keep on pumping dirty water and just siphon off from the water towers until the race cleans up?
Well, uh, let me say this. Um, when we had the gates on, okay, we don't have the gates there now at all. Now, before, uh, they, when the gates did work, we would close the gates, and we would pull out of the race while the race was clear. And we would also let the ponds backflow into the race. So we were able to, uh, pump without really pumping out of the Big Elk Creek for at least 24 hours. Uh, we were able to do that. Now we really can't do that.
And that was a significant savings?
Absolutely. Because what happens is, you know, when the, if, if, well, see, now the dilemma is this. I mean, if I had, if we get a really bad rain event and, and the water quality in, in the creek gets really bad, it's gonna be really bad in the race as well, because I have no way to prevent that now. So I, you know, I, I would rather not treat that. I would rather, if I needed to, I'd rather get the water from Artesian or something during that situation. I don't know how you feel like that. I would think you would probably want me to do that.
All right. No, just in the grand scheme of things of putting a plan together, I was just, just thinking about that.
I'm hoping to get those gates put in, uh, you know.
Where do we stand on the grinder down at the sewage plant? I haven't heard talk about that in a while.
They're building it now.
No, it's not. It hadn't went to Franklin Miller for production yet. It's, the shop drawing was submitted to InTech Engineering, and that's the company we're using. And then there was a design change by Franklin Miller that had to be reviewed, and I had communication with the, uh, Matthew Boggs, he's the lead engineer on this, and he said that if that turned around, we'll probably have it, uh, back for a production schedule within at least a month or so, hopefully.
And then how long does it take to make?
180 days.
And then?
That's the delivery.
All right. So we're, we're a good six months out before it's actually, you know? And for your underdrain system, uh, what is the typical life expectancy of, of that type of system on a plant that we have?
I would say, uh, the underdrain, this underdrain system that I'm proposing is stainless steel.
Well, the one we have right now, what is the typical life expectancy?
Probably 20 years.
And how long's it been there?
20 years.
All right. That's all I got, Ken. Thank you.
Ken, when's the sign going up?
The sign?
When's the, uh, the sign for the, uh, for the water plant?
Any day now.
Very good.
I didn't know you knew that.
I noticed it. I noticed it, and I came in today, and I said, uh, "The sign's missing." And, uh, I saw the proposal for the sign.
We got a local sign builder, uh, from Elton, and it gave us just a, uh, it's gonna be a beautiful thing.
Yeah, I saw it. Looks great.
And also, we're gonna, we have proposals on painting. The, all the, all the, right now, the, all the, uh, tanks inside, all the piping and all, all the equipment, uh, you know, 'cause a lot of it was rusting. It was, and, uh, we, we, on the exterior that we painted, uh, we, we got special paint, and we, uh, sanded and painted it to stop the rust. And now we wanted to get a professional painter in there to put a, paint the exterior and, and do some interior work. And, and we have proposals for you, and they'll be with the CIP.
Very good.
As well.
Let's try to get a local painter.
Uh, I think they're, I think both are in there.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, Lou, you've got your report.
Okay, the, uh, first I might have denied is ordinance eight, uh, 2014. Um, in 2012, the board had passed an ordinance that provided for, uh, three incremental steps for adjusting the water rates based on a, uh, financial analysis of what was done. for adjusting the water rates based on a financial analysis of what was done by a firm out of Annapolis. This ordinance will actually freeze the second tier of that recommendation and maintain the current rates. So if the board accepts this for introduction tonight, the race will be maintained at the current level indefinitely until another ordinance is passed.
Very good. And this rate increase would have been a 3%?
Water and sewer.
Yeah, yeah. Three for both. Well, I think everyone knows how I feel. Is there a motion to accept this freeze on the water and sewer rates?
Some move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second any discussion on that?
Just one. Steve, absolutely agree with the freeze, by the way. I want to know, I know, I know there was an increase with severance rent, which is an annual increase, I'm assuming, of a certain percentage. Is there a certain...
Well, not based on a consumer price index or whatever.
Yeah. What other costs am I, are we unaware of that would be a hard cost to the water system?
That translates over to a cost for contractual services within this annual.
Right, but what other costs are we missing that this 3% would, if we were to, we're not, but if we were to raise the water rates, that 3% would help offset additional costs that are coming to us, like severance rent?
Well, severance rent, cost goes up. Ortizian will increase the cost once they get, their cost once they get approval. The salaries and fringe benefits and supplies to the people, the town of Elton employees that are code into the water and sewer treatment funds, they would, they...
That's what I figured. Can we afford it?
Well, I think a study would bear that out.
Something, come again?
A study would bear that out. I mean, that was the, that was, that was the far end of the study down in Fall, 2011. There were four pieces recommended by the initial financial services.
All right. All right, thank you, Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. I'd like to make a couple other comments about the water and sewer, and I've actually got mine built here. And I think that we need to move forward with this water and sewer study. And I think we got an estimated price of $20,000, $25,000?
Twenty, twenty.
$20,000 to move forward. So what are we waiting on? We're waiting for the formal quote from them? Are you looking for action from us or...
I'd rate and get a consensus back from email to see if you want to go forward. If nothing formal, they will, if the board is interested, they will present something formal. Right now, just a dollar amount of email, but the person with municipal financial services group can get it at, if they want something, if they want something formal, you to act upon, then that will be...
We're trying to find out whether or not we were going to locate areas of water that we're missing first before we do a study. Didn't we talk about that? Because do a study and then figure out how we're going to either save or how much to increase the water because then we find out that there's other pieces missing, then we're going to have to do two studies.
I don't know if they're material, I mean, you know, when you're dealing with number gallons that we're dealing with here, you have to have to be a big chunk of unbilled customers you found that will have an impact on...
I'm just asking. I thought that...
Yeah, I think something came back with that.
And I guess the comment I'd just like to make, and I, I've said this from back in 2000, from 2007 on, I strongly believe that we've been, in my opinion, overbilling our citizens of the town of Elton. And we can look at all the data that we want, we can, we can take a study and that study's only as good as the information that we give to them or the scenarios that we give to them. And the only scenario that I can keep going by is going back, if you look at from that time in 2007, 2008, and probably the biggest tick was 2010, 2011. And I understand why we did the water and sewer rate because our major facility numbers were draining down. I mean, we didn't have a lot of building permits coming in and we had to offset the payment on the, the payment on the sewer plant, which was a large number. But what I'm going by is what my eyes see. And my eyes see this. We have a million and a half dollars in our water fund and we got $7 million in our sewer fund right now. Now, I know that changes based on, that's, that's the way it sits today. I know when I served the first time, we had $100,000 in the water fund and $100,000 in the sewer fund. And we were surviving pretty darn good for about 28 years prior. But I understand the flow of everything, but what I've seen is this number has really grown since we really kicked these numbers in. My belief is if we don't do something, what's going to happen in another five years, we're going to have about $4 million in the water fund and $14 million in the sewer fund. So that's my belief, you know? It's, I'm just going by what my belief is. I would suggest that right now we have a water rate and it's not growing, and the water rate may not be the bad rate. I've analyzed this pretty closely. The sewer rate is the one that I think is really out of line. Our growth is up to $7 million in this account today and we're using a multiplier of 1.8 over the water rate. So if the water rate is $43, you times it by 1.8 and it comes to that number of, let me get my exact number here, it'll come to in-town rate of like $75.51 for sewer. What I want the board to consider is let's drop that multiplier from 1.8 down to 1.5 and see how that affects things. Last month alone, if you look at our statement, and I know this is for a quarter billing, last month alone, our sewer account grew. We had $150,000 in revenue and our expenses were $70,000. Our revenue grew $80,000 in the sewer fund. Now, the water fund actually went the opposite way. There was more expense in the, in the water fund, so I wouldn't really want to touch that. But over the last several months, our sewer fund keeps growing in that type of manner. And I just think that maybe we don't need a study, maybe put the responsibility on me. I'll take, I'll take full responsibility if it doesn't work. But I think that we could chop that from 1.8% to 1.5%. And I promise you that $7 million will stay there. It won't grow. It may go to $8 million in five years, but it's not going to grow at the rate it's going. But I want the board, I want all of yous to consider that. I'm not asking for any action tonight, but I want you to think about that. And I know we have some, our staff here is very good on these numbers and they can give us more information than we probably need. I'm just going by what I physically see on this paper, it appears to me that it's growing every month that I've been here at that type of rate. And I can tell you, next year, we're going to be here at the same time, the study won't be done, and we're going to probably have about $9 million in that sewer fund. And it tells me we're overbilling.
That answers what I was asking about because I was thinking, if we do a study, we don't have what we want to really have as part of the equation, then why would we do the study and then have to...
Yes.
Ken, would you, you answered that by, right now?
I'd like for you guys to consider, no action tonight, but I'd like to, I'd like to put everything I just told you down onto a graph the way I see it. And then I'll get staff to take a look at it, make sure my assumptions are correctly because I may be out here in right field. But if we were to go from 1.8 to 1.5, it's going to be about $12 a month savings to the residents on the sewer side. I think that's a pretty significant, times as many households as we have, it's going to be, start to come into an impact there. But it's not going to be such an impact that it's going to drain the $7 million that we haven't had a count out. It's going to still grow. I promise you it's going to still grow.
And I think, I agree with what you're saying, but I also think we need to continue on with this audit. Before we do the study, we have to continue with the audit, find out where we are losing water, find out these meters are not sufficient, get them replaced. I mean, that's something you started a while ago and I think that's very important before we, if we choose to do the actual study.
And I will, I will absolutely agree with that because I think that you're going to, the information you've put into these studies, we have to have our information correctly. I mean, we, we just ran across a little hiccup that we need to talk about a little bit later. But I can tell you, those numbers weren't even calculated in the decision that the mayor and commissioners made in 2010. And that could have been an impact to make the decision a little different. So the information going into the model has to be correct. And I do agree with you. Let's move forward and get that information. But I do feel very comfortable that we could, we could give our residents that little bit back, but I want you all to sleep on it. And hopefully, a lot of people are watching and will call everybody and say, "Drop that sewer rate for us." Okay, that's all I have to say about the water and sewer though. I'm sorry, I rambled a little bit. It's good. Okay.
I'd like to make a comment. If the board reaches a consensus to change the sewer rate, because you've introduced this bill, it can be presented for adoption as amended at the next meeting with those rates, if you, if that's what you want to do, rather than enact this ordinance and then enact the subsequent ordinance of the same, you know, the same area. So it can be amended when it's enacted.
Thank you.
That's true.
Anything else, Lou?
That's it.
Okay, I'm going to combine old business and new business together again so we can, we don't have to bounce around if that's all right with everybody. First of all, I wanted to recognize Councilman Alan McCarthy and our audience tonight. Thank Alan for coming again tonight. I think this is your second, third, or fourth time that you've been here to the meeting and, and I can tell you, it's, we really appreciate you coming.
Well, if you invite me, I'll come.
Thank you. And there's a few things I wanted to touch base on. We're starting the budgeting process and we're going to be working as a team as we start to narrow this down. And, and I really mean that. I sincerely mean that. Everyone's input is extremely important when we do this because we want to be all on the same page. It's going to be a lot of give and take when it comes to this and, and I know there's going to be some good, bad, and ugly when we look at these budgets, but I think between the five of us, I think we can come up with a real nice budget for next year. One of the things, or actually two of the things that I'm wanting the mayor and commissioners to consider in the budget for next year is, one, last week or 10 days ago, seven days ago at the, prior to our workshop meeting, we had a company come in from Wilmington, Delaware, and they actually took care of some of the sidewalks. When you walk out of the building here, you'll see a couple of the sidewalks have actually been shaved. And I know the mayor and commissioners had looked at this in years past, but, you know, unfortunately, I get to go to the University of Maryland a lot. My son's at University of Maryland. Every one of their sidewalks are done. When I say every one, anywhere where there's a potential tripping hazard, it'll actually shave that off. You don't have to tear the, the material out, you don't have to pour new pad. And when you pour those pads, I'm going to look at you, Dan, how much does a pad cost us?
Every time we go out there, probably at least $500, $600 bucks.
$500 to $600 and we can correct that tripping hazard for less than $45, around that number. So we're going to get a proposal on that from, from this group and they have the franchise for this area, so we're kind of limited maybe to go with that group. But I want the board to look at it and I want you to take a look at how the sidewalk, the hazards can look like. And there's methods out there that you could do. You could float the concrete or you can actually grind it like we did. I can tell you, it produced a lot of dust and we have to take a look at that and see how they can capture that dust a little bit better for us. But I think it can be a home run for our town and I think it'll make our sidewalks a lot better. So take a look when you get an opportunity. The other thing I wanted to bring up, you know, we, we have to continue to entice construction in our town, economic development. We need, we need this, we need additional importunity revenue. And that revenue coming in could be from new houses, new housing construction. I'm going to propose, and it'll be proposed to the group prior to next budget, I want to freeze the fees on major facility fees on any existing lots that are in the town of Elton. It's, we're going to identify exactly how many lots in these subdivisions that we have, but I think it's extremely important to get those houses built. Right now, we probably have an inventory of, I'm going to say, several hundred houses that already have the sidewalks in, have the base coat of roads in, but you've got vacant lots and the developers and the builders are telling me, if they could get a, an advantage of $15,000, then they could sell these homes. If they can sell these homes and they can build that house, the town of Elton will probably reap $1,000 a year in taxes for importunity and I think that's the way to go. Secondly, I know when I was out there campaigning during the election, I noticed that there was neighborhoods that had these vacant lots and the grass would grow up high, the neighborhood would get mad. What would happen? The town of Elton goes out and mows it, or we'd call the developer owns a lot and they would mow it. But I think it would be a way to make some things happen. There's conditions with this. The conditions would be, they have to pull that permit and they got to get these houses built in one year. If they don't make it, there's no extensions. So it's really putting a big push to have developers build X amount of homes in a short period of time. But I think, I think it's something that we should consider as a team here and I think it would spur so much initial growth that I think we could get a lot of action. Just, just a comment. The last thing I have today, a little bit more about the economic development side and I'll have, we're going to show a quick video. And Earl Piner and I had, did some discussion about how we can help, do our part as elected officials and try to help our local businesses. And we've teamed up and what you're going to see here is a vision that I'd like to have for all of our, for all of our businesses throughout the whole town of Elton. Not just downtown, but every business that we have in the town of Elton. I'd like to budget for some economic development money so that we can do this and help create business and action. I think that if we can show that our leadership position can go out and do this, I think it'll go a long way. And I'm going to be asking the mayor, commissioners, town staff to get active with us if we decide to move forward with this. I want to make you all stars. You're going to see this actor that's going to come up there and he did a great job.
You all might want to move around so you can see because I'm only going to show this once by charging.
All right, here we go.
Hi, I'm Edward Fashi, Men's Warehouse, right in the downtown of Elton, North Main Street, 116 West Main Street in Elton. I get all my suits of Eddie. I tell you, the suit I have working now, it'll suit you and have you fit to ready to go right at the door when you're ready to come in. Let me go get me a tuxedo. I'm going to see Eddie right now.
Hi, I'm Rob Alt, Mayor of the Town of Elton. In my business, you're going to get one opportunity to impress people. I do that by making a statement and shopping here at Edwards Fashions in downtown Elton. I'm going to look around a little bit.
Hello, my name is Edward Kielman. I'm the owner for Edwards Fashions Men's Warehouse, right here in Elton. I've been in business for the last forty-some years in the same location. We carry in the store a nice line of men's clothing, even for the big and tall. When we say for the big and tall, we have it. Look at that belt, taller than me. Look at these jackets right here. See, we can go three of me. That's big men. We do even tuxedo warehouse. Here's a nice tuxedo here, double pressing tuxedo with the six button. That's a shoulder collar or a pink lapel. If you don't like to wear too much colors, like for the vest, you could stay with black vest, black coat, black pants, white shirt, and pick up the color. I studied my trade in Europe. I have the Jennings Man Certificate. We do alterations, that's another, my specialty is alterations also. I... I get alterations done for men and women. I do wedding guys. We do alterations on leather goods. We do alterations of any kind, anything that needs to be done. This is the place, if you need a suit, to come to buy your suit, not at a department's store. So, for the regular, the small, the big and tall, Edward's Fashions, for the more.
It was a, it's kind of unique, and there was no cost to this video. We had actually a resident of the town, Joe Piner, actually put this together out of helping us in less than two days to do this. And Edward was, of course, the beneficiary of these two great spokespeople for it. But I think that I can see this working for all businesses, including our legal community, where we can do this and give them a few seconds to sell themselves. I mean, we need to show more of Elton than just showing the perception of the other issues that we have. And let's highlight our positives more so than think about our negatives, and that's the intent here. So, our next step, we're going to have Chief Donnelly and Town Administrator Lou George on the target because we're going to enhance Mayor Fasona's drug box out there. We're actually going to put a video over top of it, and we're going to talk a little bit about why they should use this box more and talk about the whole prescription drug issue, and I think it's going to be a winner for us. So, that's all I had on my report. And just to add to that, if you notice, right now, we've had several calls on that. A lot of people didn't know there was ties being sold from this place, certain things. But the advertisement was really easy because he's using social media for that, YouTube, Facebook. And so many people are getting the just of Edward's Fashion, or one of the merchants downstairs, I'm downstairs, downtown. But now, if we add all the other merchants that are actually operating downtown in Elton, they'll be able to get seen by thousands of people. So, your vision is hopefully going to come true. I think it's going to be wonderful. Okay. Commissioner Dan Reenan, you're on.
All right. Good evening, everybody. That's an awesome video. I like that. What kind of social media did you put it on?
It was on Facebook and YouTube, I saw.
All right. I'll try to link into it and share it and get it passed around and stuff.
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
His daughter lives in Georgia, and she's sharing it. So, it is getting places.
Awesome. Unfortunately, I wasn't here the last meeting, but I did take a look at the video, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And I just want to reiterate what some of the board talked about with us being number one wrongly in crime. I had a lot of people that follow me and stuff, of course, shared the link with me, called me up, and instantly, you can massage numbers to be just about anything you want it to be. Now, I know that there's issues and per capita, the chief put a great PowerPoint together, and we do have some of our own issues. We definitely do. And I'm sure the chief and Commissioner Givens are going to put their heads together to come up with some creative ways to take care of these issues moving forward. But definitely, it's a wrong thing for anybody to try to put something out. And one thing that was talked about was the social media side, and it plays into the EDC, that we need to have one voice coming forward, "We are Elton." And what is "We are Elton"? I mean, that needs to be resonated loudly and strongly. Videos like this debunking, and I saw that Captain Zerillo, he put out something on social media also to debunk it. It needs to be out there. And I think Mary Jo, you talked about sharing it all around. I couldn't agree more with all of that. But tying it all together so everybody has one spot to go to is really the key in the future, at least what I think. I did see on where we voted to put back salary from, it was HR salary, back into different accounts. And I do have a couple of questions with that, and I understand the philosophy behind Where it was $5900 for water and sewage a piece, right? So, it was just shy of 11 grand. Yeah, 59. So, it was 59 water fund, 59 sewage fund. How many other people's salaries are being paid from that fund or being charged to that fund?
Well, the finance department split between the general water and sewage funds, and administrator's salary split between water, general water and sewer funds. Some public works employees, I can't keep their names and numbers, I have that in my head. And of course, the HR department.
Right. And with our time clocks, which we don't have time clocks for this department, so everything is still handwritten as far as keeping account of these time sheets. So, everything's handwritten. What I'm trying to get to in my capacity as legislating, once we get into the budget, certain people are going to say that we're going to need this X amount of dollars. How do we keep track of that money, those true man-hours? Do we have a code that we use for those man-hours?
We don't keep track of those. They're pre-coded ahead of time, that all the salary wages are split up. But people that work across all three funds, the women in back, someone on daily basis, the fact they've been on the hours they worked for each fund. So, there's an estimate, which is how the salary is allocated.
Is there a better way of doing it to keep an accurate count?
It would be very time-consuming, and you would probably be trying to get more, won't get much for the buck out of that. I mean, you could spend time just coding yours activity by what fund, and some activities are all funds. So, this was an estimate, except the west end that approximates the amount of money.
Yeah. This isn't a gotcha session or something, and I know that my tact is sometimes less than perfect. Believe me, I know that. It's a character defect. I'm just looking forward, or looking forward to next year when we're sitting here and we're talking about salaries and we're talking about the budget, and all of a sudden, you know, last year, we had to pull X amount of dollars from the general fund to cover. Is it safe to say that actually, that number, if everything was being pulled out of the general fund, that general fund number should have been a lot higher than the 753 because we're pulling salaries from the water sewage fund?
But it certainly would have been higher if we coded everything to the general fund.
Okay. You wouldn't know an educated guess of how much more, would you?
No.
Right. And I think that goes to what I'm trying to think of, is we're not sure exactly how much that is because it's, well, you would be able to figure it out because you're paying by percentages.
Well, it's the way it is because it all coded.
Can you give me that number?
One of the things you have to consider here is that these are business enterprise funds, not governmental. So, when you have this coding of these personnel to a business enterprise, like the water program, they're totally, that's their job, to fix the water mains and check hybrids and stuff. They're the water company, so to speak. Then you have a number of other personnel who do a number of things.
No, I get it. I get it. But the problem is, we're going to be voting to decrease the sewage fund and/or any other, not sewage fund, but how much money we charge for sewage. The problem with that is if we add more people, say, to Dan's department, then those people will be adding to the bill of the sewage department, would they not? Or the sewage fund?
That's what you added them.
Right. So, you would have to be careful of how much you would discount or rebate back to the customer, the end user, us, because if you add more people to it, and then you're going on hypothesis of what it is. And I'm not saying that it's wrong. I'm just looking for concrete numbers and a more simpler way of being able to digest these numbers and to break them out. I mean, it's a simple algebra problem. And that's all I'm asking, is there a simpler way that we could actually get to that to make sure, as we're legislating, that we don't get into a jackpot? That's all.
I think Mary Jo has to answer.
I know, and I want to ask, because we discussed this earlier, Commissioner Van Nen and I. Do you have this book?
Yes.
Okay. Because the coding we were talking about is over here.
What page?
On, well, on all of them, on each department. Am I right? The code's on the left-hand side?
So, what, is it?
I'm sorry.
Right. What page are you?
Well, on any page, the number on the left-hand side.
That's the general ledger account number.
Okay.
The 17-digit number is the general ledger account number.
So, that would be your code on knowing where it's?
Well, since this is in the salary account in the water fund, would be people who are coded entirely to the water fund in addition to the percentage of the people who are split among three funds, which again would be all of HR because they are HR for everyone, not the general fund funded.
Right, I understand. I'm just trying to.
And finance department do manage water and sewer bills, and we are affiliated among general water and sewer funds as the town administrator.
So, I can look at that and dissect it myself, then?
No, because you'll see, it'll be difficult because you see at the bottom, the cover of each page will have the number of full-time positions also on each department. But you won't know. You know, there's some people that are 100% coded there, some are 15% coded there.
Right.
So, I have to show you the worksheet of the name. It would be too complicated presenting by the document itself.
All right. I can come in and sit down and dissect it.
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you. That is all I have. That's all I have for now.
So, you don't need anything later in the meeting? You might need to talk about some other things.
Yeah. Later on, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Givens.
My voice is hoarse. He knows what I want.
No, actually, I don't. Oh, yeah, the same thing with us. The media, dedicated TV with Comcast, that would be perfect to put the commercials up on that channel. And then you could have, well, you could have everybody.
Right.
You know? Anything else?
That's it.
Do that already?
A closed meeting.
Oh, then we're going to have a closed meeting?
Yes, we are. Commissioner Piner?
Anything else? Okay. I'm representing Parks and Rec. First, since they answered, just want to ask a question. There was a roof issue with the leaky. You guys already take care of that, did you?
It should be addressed this week.
Okay. As a water leak over in Parks and Rec. This is good, get a chance to intervene with a lot of the staff. So, the Parks and Rec, they will have their dance recital at 6:00 this Friday at Elton High School. So, if you haven't attended one of those, I highly recommend it. You'll see a lot of good dancers from this program. A lot of good dancers. So, anyway, this is probably my sixth time going, sixth year going to one of these recitals, but it's real nice to see it. So, I asked you to come and support it. Then also, I had a chance to talk to the staff, and I would like to try to create some additional funding for them and some programs. I know that a lot of things I'm involved with, the mayor and commissioners, I would like to propose, the mayor and commissioners' cup golf tournament, help raise some funding for their department because I know that we do it a lot for women girls club, we do it, YMCA, we do it for everything. So, I just thought it'd be a good time to actually do something and put something in their pocket because the funding comes from that. We'll go to the Parks and Rec to help pay for basketballs or scorecards or whatever they need. So, I already set a date for August the 7th, ran it through. Our first one will be held at Chesapeake Bay Golf Course, and then we're going to try to rotate it throughout the county to different golf courses so that no one will be left out. Hopefully, the other mayor and commissioners will buy in, and then we can get something started through that. Then the last thing I have is Commissioner Givens talked about this years ago. Since I got on that little topic, we'd like to have maybe a mayor and commissioner's basketball tournament for girls and boys, running maybe through the middle school and through the high school. Because I have a big need for that. I'm right now doing a Tuesday and Thursday after school, 3:00 to 5:00. 12 weeks for the kids at middle school, and I've had over 43 players that's come there. And then July the 13th, the county, then I'm running a program for the county called the Movers Program. So, these same kids are already registering for a program through the county that's, I think it's $32. But what I'm doing for the next, for the 12 weeks is nothing, so it's free.
It's free for you.
No, he says it's free for me. No, it's free for them, but it's my time. So, that's it. So, we want to have a mayor and commissioners tournament. Something to create for the kids. When you give that extra little name, you know, department, the mayor and commissioners are providing a tournament, it's like, oh, the Cecil College when I was there, we used to have Christmas tournaments. We would just create any tournament during that season, and there would be 20 teams wanting to get into it. At a cost of maybe $200, $250, you register the team, and the team comes in, they play the game, you pay for the referees, and the money goes into that department. Easy. So, anyway, that's my report.
Very good. Mary Jo?
Okay. Old business, we had discussed over at the hospital, the stop sign in High and Bow is only two-way rather than four-way. Couple of weeks ago, I think Mr. Givens brought it up. Are we doing anything there? Yesterday, I almost witnessed a dead-on car hitting another one. Again, so there is really, that one area needs to be addressed, I think, with a four-way stop.
I actually brought it back, and I think Lou, you mentioned, or maybe it was, I don't know if it was the chief or Lou, but I think the state road requirement to that close to the other stop sign, there wasn't enough distance when you originally looked at it? Or can you, do you know where?
The intersecting streets are ours. I don't know.
They're ours, aren't they?
I'm sorry?
They're our streets, aren't they?
They're our streets. I don't know if the impact on 268, which is North Street, would be significant or not. I don't know. Normally, the state highway, before they place a traffic control device, they always do an assessment of car count, movement count, all that. That's the basis for their traffic control device in case you have a serious accident. Then obviously, you know, if you get into litigation about it, doing a justification for a traffic control device, and that's basically the state's protocol for doing it, and see if it meets warrants and all that.
Well, what do we need to do?
Simply do it because if you want to do it, wouldn't give you a basis.
Well, how do we, yeah, what do we have to do?
You have to tell the administrator, you want to have an hallway intersection there, give it attention, then I'll take care of it.
I thought you did.
Okay. That's all I want to do.
Okay, we're telling you tonight.
As long as the board supports it, you know, I'll take care of it.
All right. I think the board will be supportive, but we want to make sure there's some good basis there. I mean, always a good effort.
That's my job. I'll get a traffic count.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. The other thing I know tomorrow is the Parks and Rec dance recital, or Friday, rather, but it's also downtown, the Old Fashioned Christmas. We're having Clydesdale horse and buggy rides free to the public, carolers, Elton High School Band, last night of cash for Christmas. So, if you have nothing else to do, come out. It'll be, I mean, the weather's supposed to be great. So, I just wanted to tell everyone that, and I hope everyone has a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Mary Jo, at one of your next alliance meetings, can you determine or ask the board? I was asked about handicap parking on Main Street, and I don't know if that's came up in the past or...
Yes.
What happened? Good, bad, or indifferent? No, yay?
Well, when they redid the streets, they took the one handicap spot away that was there. Then they put the two, I think it is in the municipal lot off of Main Street. The problem is, the one is taken all day by a resident of Main Street.
Okay.
So, it leaves you with one spot, and if the hairdresser has somebody, there definitely is a need, you know? I try to, if people call, tell them, "There is handicap parking in the back lot of Long's Pharmacy," but, you know, in that, you could actually get your wheelchair and come around the building. But people still want parking on the street, and there is not one.
The state doesn't permit handicap on the street, parking like that, because it doesn't have the adequate, handicap ADA standards for space to exit a car as an handicap. That's why they don't, you never see handicap space on a street, you see it off-street. There have to be ADA requirements for space.
What about the parking spot behind, or next?
Well, we're not enforcing it, so anybody that wanted to use a space there could use it.
Oh, I know.
Whether it's handicap or not, it may be a difference now that they wanted to pay anything that's free.
Who brought it up was a?
A attorney.
And turned down that end.
Uh, right there next to the lines.
Oh.
Well, listen, we'll take a look at it. Anything else you have to say tonight?
Yeah.
All right. It's time of the meeting to open up the floor to our public. Anyone have anything to say? Any comments? Al McCarthy, come on down.
Thank you very much.
Give your address for us.
My address is six fifty-two Middle Street, and I live in Chesapeake City, Maryland. I am not a resident of the town of Elton, unfortunately. But I do get to pay lots of taxes, of which I'm grateful.
I have a number of issues to discuss, and I want you all to participate with me, open your minds, and let's see if we can solve some problems. You had mentioned possibly freezing water and sewer rates, or water and sewer rates, is that correct?
Uh, we hopefully will be voting that they won't be, there won't be any increase with this three percent automatic increase that's supposed to kick in on what date?
January first.
January first. So I believe pretty comfortably the board's going to vote in favor of the freeze of the three percent increase.
Okay. I started, when I came to Cecil County as a veterinarian, and I did that for over twenty-five years, I started to wear out. It was difficult for me to deal with horses on a full-time basis, but I always dabbled in real estate. I got involved with some people that are probably well-known to most of you, who basically were knowledgeable about building. I was a limited investor and got involved with them. The market turned bad, and all of my partners have kind of disappeared for one reason or another. You can read between the lines there. This project, which is in the town of Elton, there are still thirty-nine units left to be built. We've built forty-five. We've sold thirteen of them in five years. I own indirectly thirty of them. I've paid to the town of Elton six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in water and sewer hookup fees, not to mention that in our nickel, we put in the entire water and sewer complex in the development, connected it to Washington Woods, and also connected it to Colonial Ridge. And we also were required to pave everything in front of the development on the state highway. We also put in curbs and driveways and sewer mains for the town and the properties, not even, actually for the county, and it's not, let me see how this works. We put it in, that, we put in the sidewalks and the street curbs and the sewer mains for the town, but that part of the property is not even in the town. And that costs us probably well in excess of two-hundred thousand dollars. Now, what am I here for? If you could possibly freeze or basically reduce the water and sewer hookup fees for developers, which I am now one, it would be a great benefit to us. It would make the houses hopefully much more sellable. Since the recession started, your ability to buy a home is much harder now because banks don't want to lend money to most people. These type of starter homes basically are for first-time homeowners, and they don't have twenty percent to put down. So let's say I sell the house for a hundred-and-fifty thousand bucks. That comes to roughly thirty thousand dollars they'd have to put down to buy the house, unless they can get some type of a zero-liters governmental loan, but they can't get that because their credit's a quarter, okay? That's one thing that I think would benefit the town, benefit the builders, and help you bring the town back to life to some degree. Now, for what it's worth, one of the ways that you clear houses in a town, a city, or even a state is with a foreclosure. In front of me, I have a list of houses which have been taken back by the banks. Now, why were they taken back? They went through the foreclosure process, but they can't give out a bid on them. So there's fourteen houses which have been taken back by the banks in the last ten months. Here's the addresses if you're interested. And this is only in the town of Elton. Now, I would like to commend the gentleman who runs Severn Trend. His phosphate and his nitrogen numbers are something he should get a medal for. You cannot believe how important these types of achievements are going to be moving forward when it comes to basically meeting MDE requirements and also the WIP requirements. You cannot, you cannot do enough to make these things happen. You should be so proud, you're putting water back in the streams, it's cleaner than the water in the streams. And this will happen with the Northeast Advanced Waste Water Treatment Facility as we move forward and do it. Now, the next thing I would like to talk about, now, I'm speaking only as a private citizen. I'm not here in any official capacity whatsoever. So anything that I say, just look at me, I'm going to say it. From my perspective, I look at the county as a big family, and I look at all the towns as part of this family. I think that we need to do everything that we can moving forward to share services if we can, to basically design policies which will benefit the towns and benefit the counties. I cannot see Cecil County moving forward unless the towns go with us, and I don't see the towns moving forward if the county gets left behind. So it basically just brings up a big thought in my mind, how do we integrate water and sewer so that the town of Elton can basically survive, keep their costs as low as possible, and use the existing facilities, which are probably in overcapacity at this particular point? I think that if we put our collective heads together, that a decision will be made available for us. That is basically good for everyone. I, in my capacity, would be more than glad to do everything that I could to make sure that Elton gets a fair shake, and I would like for the other towns to basically participate in these things as we go. As it stands right now, we see growth in Perryville, we see it in Northeast, and we see it in Elton. But everything between those towns is basically fellow ground. We need to basically fill it in. One of the things that you need to look at, if we bring in businesses, if we bring in industries, that we can choose what we want to do. These are companies that pay a good tax base and require very little services in comparison to what it costs to have a family here. Family comes, two kids, that's roughly ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars per child. Let's say their taxes are three, you're already twenty-one thousand and a whole. Not that I dislike families, but you can see the economics here. We want good viable green businesses that employ our residents. Right now, as I speak, over fifty percent of the adult population in this county leaves this county every day to take employment somewhere else. We need to get with the program, put in the infrastructure, benefit the towns, allow the county to move forward also, and employ our people and give these people a reason not to leave town when they grow up. I have three kids, none of them live here. Young lady I date has two children, none of them live here. Most of the people I know who have children, they can't stay here because there's no jobs. And last but not least, we need to collectively find a way to address, identify, and resolve this drug issue. This will be the ruination of our state. That's all I have to say. I wish you everybody Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And I will see you next year, and I hope that you permit me to come to your meetings.
You're welcome anytime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, who's up next? Mr. Lemon?
I wanted to ask a question about the water and sewer. Coming to these meetings, I've heard that you have an infrastructure problem. Is that true?
Well, I would say depending on how you look at it. I would have to defer to Dan. I know we have, we still have old infrastructure.
Aging.
Aging infrastructure.
Yeah, I'm trying to say.
And, and many of the areas. I know Elton Heights probably is still full of terracotta pipe. I'm not a hundred percent sure about Main Street. That's something that I really haven't dug into about that side of it, but yes, the answer is yes, it's aging.
So what I'm suggesting is you have all this money that you work out a plan to, and this is, I don't perceive this happening just next year, but over the next few years, work out a plan to use some of that money to improve the infrastructure, rather than wait for something to fall apart if you have an infrastructure plan, you know, and then work it from there, and be certain to develop one. I think that would help the town.
Thank you. Mr. Littenberg, you had something to add tonight?
Yeah, just, just, first I want to thank Mr. Potter for the cold beverage the other evening. I didn't get a chance to thank him. But anyhow, now that he's, now that he's a star on television, maybe I'll get an autograph. Then again, maybe you guys want to get a little bit of the makeup on the heads.
I would agree with that.
Anyhow. Your workshop the other night, it's good that, that people in the audience can participate, ask questions, you ask questions, and that's what it's about. And I think there's a lot of, a lot of answers that both sides can get at the workshops before you couldn't participate. That's a good thing. And I guess this question is for, is for?
Ken.
Ken, I could use that. Just something came to my mind. The affluents that go in there, now tidal water comes all the way up to the Delaware Avenue Bridge. When your affluence comes from the treatment plant, do you put that in the outgoing tide or how's that work?
At least discharge twenty-five hours.
Twenty-four hours a day. It was just a stupid thought in the mind, a question I had to ask.
Okay. Well, listen, we're going to adjourn this meeting, but we are going to have a closed meeting tonight, so I'm going to ask everyone to exit the building. We're going to have both attorney. Yep. Steve, I need you here, John, of course, Louis, Michelle, and the rest of the board.